And I hit the button the first time. This is the Finance Committee meeting for, what is today, March 11th? We, I have approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Thank you, Bill.
Motion to approve the minutes.
So, I wasn't here at the last meeting. So, it would've been two meetings ago.
Did I do them? Maybe I did.
You sent them.
I did them.
But you sent them. They're done.
Yes.
Okay. So, I, I, he doesn't, he can't.
No, you weren't here.
Come on in, Jamie.
I have two hundred minutes from the last meeting.
Second. All in favor? Two to zero. Okay.
I'm standing.
One extension. Mayor's not here, she doesn't get to communicate. Public speak. We'll, we'll let you speak when we get to the exemptions. Okay? First thing is Chapter 40, Section B, Cannabis Stabilization Funding. This is a no-brainer to me. Obviously, we had to create the stabilization account first, Val, correct? And now that we've got it, we simply accept Chapter 40, subsection 5B. Is that all we do at council? What do we?
Well, they didn't accept 40-5B when they set up the stabilization, but this particular paragraph is the one that allows you to dedicate a revenue. So, you want to accept this paragraph and say that it's for the purpose of dedicating 100% of the cannabis and that impact fees to the stabilization.
If we did not accept this, what would that do? Like, not accepting this, does that mean that we wouldn't have to put 100% of the cannabis into it or none of it will go in?
Well, it can't go in if it's on free cash.
Right. So, when you, when you accept this and you specify what it's for and you specify how much of it goes in, and the mayor said that she wants it from the conservative to go in, so that's what we put.
But what you're saying, though, is if we don't accept this...
It won't go in.
...it becomes free cash in the fall.
Oh, this, this year's bill, anyway.
Because, you're right. But I'm just, just hypothetically, if we don't accept this, the impact fee becomes to, is free cash. Then the mayor can say, you know, well, the problem is, you might as well put it all in there because we can't use it for anything other than very specific uses. Right?
Right. The problem is, if you let it become free cash, you don't have it set aside, you can't use it during the year to the purposes it's supposed to be used for. It has to sit until it gets...
And you're allowed, if we put it right in, we could use it.
Yes.
And when do we normally get the impact fee? Beginning of the year?
Well, we just recently made the event to the anniversary, end of February about the last one.
So, we would have a half official year to use the fund?
Yes.
I don't, sorry about that.
Also, this collects its own interest, so we'd be collecting interest on it.
I was hoping the mayor was here, I was wondering.
She's right here.
I was just thinking something about what the, we're talking about the impact fee and accepting this, which is, seems a no-brainer.
Yes.
And I was just thinking the other day, something that could be used.
Is it in the impact?
Well, it's part of the impact fee, so I don't think it's a matter of that. I can't remember, so it doesn't matter. But, just as an aside, when do you think you'll find out from the state? They gonna give you definitions of what you can use the impact fee for? Are they gonna try and be more specific about it?
It's in, it's in each of those community agreements. It's already described in the agreements we have. And the reason why I'd like to go into this stabilization account is that this money is not only defined by the state or even local finance regulations, it's defined by an existing contract that we sign with a third party to do business in the city.
But I thought there was some question as to the breadth of what we could use the impact fee, and you were waiting for some clarification from the state.
For the next HDA's, yeah.
Oh, the next time you write one?
Yeah.
So, the ones you've written now, they're specific?
They're valid contracts, yeah.
But it does deal with, like, police and fire protection, public safety stuff?
Yep. Public infrastructure, education, absolutely.
Could we make the argument, just hypothetically, we need a new ambulance because we have more drug issues?
Could we not? Down that path in this meeting? I would refer you to a couple of communities out east that made some very similar arguments around ambulance and fire trucks and that didn't do so.
Didn't also.
No. And that's one of the reasons why the HDA's are changing.
I was just thinking about it. I won't think at all anymore. President? I don't see any other questions. Anybody else have questions?
I do not.
Not at all.
It seems pretty straightforward.
Seems like I have a motion. So, Val, can you, do I read this entire thing when we do this? Notwithstanding section...
I wouldn't.
Thank you, I don't want to. So, could you get me a motion for Wednesday night?
No, I mean, everyone will have it, so you could just say, you can accept the paragraph as noted on the page in order to dedicate 100, you could read that last sentence. I wouldn't read the whole paragraph, just say, as noted on the document or something.
I think that's a part of the question.
Let me just ask Barb. She'll give me the discussion.
Make a motion to recommend that we accept the, 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 the paragraph as noted on the document.
Second.
Are you for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Thank you. Did Mike say whether he'd make it?
I think he tried, but...
I want to wait on him if I can because I think it's important, but, so I want to get into a little bit with the CPA exemptions. JP, I asked you to come because we're hoping you will collect the information that I believe the council needs. I have a couple of ideas. First of all, Barbara said this has to be done by September. Everybody get that? All right. To get it on the ballot. CPA have a number, committee had a number of questions until I cut them off and said their only reason was to say, yes, they would, they're, they have no problem. And they voted unanimously to approve this. Administration isn't the CPA committee's failure. I talked to Stuart, who said this was a, Stuart down at the Coalition. Generally, assessors deal with this, but I'd like to know, who administers this? How do we find out how many of our qualified people might apply? Because it's low-income, low-moderate-income senior housing or low-income housing people. It's very specific. And as we stated at the last meeting, you can't separate it out, has to be the entire exemption. You did that, or if they do.
Can't separate, has to be the entire exemption for the exempted class.
Right. So, take low-income housing...
On the IGR release December 2019 from the DOR, it has to be number one, that's the full class.
So, you have a way of finding out how many residents might apply for this?
No. I don't think anyone can give you an accurate prediction. When I spoke with the finance director in North Hampton, they had no idea...
Do they have the exemption?
They now have the exemption. They have no idea, well, how many would come up. I think if we look to our finance director, we're gonna go, how do you know how many people? I think we can make some intelligent estimates.
I think that's important.
Well, you can also put cap. You can also do a cap.
Unfortunately, that's a great idea. I'd love to see where we could put cap, but not for a CPA exemption. You are exempt by accepting the way out of the, of having the tax, the fee applied senior before you go.
Anybody who meets one.
You meet one, you're in.
Is, if, it can't yet.
So, we can't say, well, it's over 80, over 70, over 65, over 60. What about income? No, it is what they provide, what they provide.
Moderate-income senior housing.
Moderate, low and moderate-income senior housing and low-income housing for everyone.
And that's defined by the DOR?
That's defined by...
It's very specific.
Yeah, it's very specific. I believe, I have the figures for North Hampton, North Hampton put out last year, for two people, it's $60,000.
It's in the CPA regulation?
Yes.
It's defined in the definitions. It must, it must roll on Chapter 40-5B.
Okay.
And then, if it's a percentage, which changes here annually based on the annual income for the, for the, it's just a, it's just a...
Okay. I think if we could just have that available to the council when we go to approve this, this statement to that regard. Also, who administers this? The assessors?
Typically, the assessor will be the one that takes the applications.
And do they do, like I do, abatements? Do they look at the qualifications?
They could look at the qualifications. And what we would have to ask people is to bring in their tax returns to be able to prove your income status. And if they're not willing to bring in tax returns, they can't grant an abatement.
And that is...
With federal tax returns, that would be sufficient evidence. There is no asset qualification for the CPA exemption, so you don't have to, you know, have so much money in the bank, you don't have to be proof of this. So, it's just an income qualification and an age qualification.
Well, it says income, it says income housing, low-income housing, which does not have a age.
Right. But you'd have to be a senior.
No.
In order to get the CPA exemption.
No. Low-income housing...
Or qualify as a low-income housing.
Right. I'm just saying.
Everybody. But you could be low or moderate income and be a senior.
A senior, okay, got it. Correct. As long as you knew that there was a class of people that could apply that's not...
For example, right now, with the 41(c) exemptions that we have, there are about 60-plus exemptions that currently are in effect.
Is that for, what is the 41(c) exemption?
41(c).
$1,000 exemption.
It's the $1,000 exemption where the state reimburses us $500 up to a total of $155,000, I believe, and we pay additional $500 from our own resources.
Right, and there's only 60 people that have applied for it?
There's only 60 or so people who are, have applied for it.
It sounds like that same 60 might be...
That same 60, you got right on track. That same 60 will definitely be eligible for the CPA senior exemption. So, for example, take, if you look at all, all, all 60 people, the average house value for those people are about $239,000. If you subtract out $100,000 per, per house for the exempt, the initial exemption that we have, if we have $100,000, the first $100,000 is not taxed, so that leaves you about $139,411. $139,411, that will be taken off the CPA surcharge at about $74 per person for that group.
For you?
Or about $4,443.
Just for that group?
For that group.
And that was the senior group?
That's the 41(c) exemption.
Oh, okay. The one that we have today?
The one that we have today.
The 64 people who give the exemption.
And there may be more.
And there may be, there certainly may, more people might come.
But the impact, as I was told, wasn't that high. Four to $6,000.
For that group of people. But you're raising the income level in this group from $25,164 for a single person, $30,683 for married, to about $60,000 and change.
So, there might be a lot.
For two people. And then it changes with each number of people who are in the household. Usually, in the senior households, you don't, a lot of, you have eight people in households, one, two, and three. So, you're dealing with those higher thresholds.
Jamie, would Stuart have any data on similar communities that have done this, their population being similar to East Hampton, where we could find out what the impact was on their communities? I don't know. The demographic almost have to be the same. I don't know how you do it, but...
And what he indicated was that, you know, other communities that have adopted it, that it hadn't, it hadn't seen that much interest in actually people applying for it or applying for it here after year.
Because you have to apply for it every year.
You have to apply annually.
We could ask him, but I think we'd then have to go to those municipalities directly to ask him.
Well, okay. You, you, you mind looking into that, JP? I want to give the council...
In terms of municipalities, it may be beyond, I wouldn't mind doing it, but it'd be nice to have...
Stuart can give us the, Stuart at the Coalition can give us the municipalities, right? That have the exemption, does he know?
They're pretty public.
I don't know.
That's how I found ours. You can go on this website if you're kind of...
I'm happy to try to track that down.
It's much of an estimate of what the cost to the city might be. The 4,000 is excellent, that's, that's accurate, but that's a small sliver of a group. But also, the history of how it's being dealt with in other communities in the sense of how many people have applied, and I'm not talking about, like, North Hampton, that's twice the size of us, three times the size. If there's any communities that are similar, that'll give us a sense of, what are we asking the assessors to do, too? How much administration are we asking them to, on top of what they already do? But this is worth it because it's not, doesn't sound like a lot of people. If it's 100 people, I'd be surprised. 60 now in one group. I mean, I don't know. It's worth, it's still worth doing in my mind, I just, I think the information would be good to get.
The administration, as far as the assessors are concerned, I think would be much less because right now, they have to deal with not only the income qualification, but your asset qualification. You have to bring a bank statement.
That's for the $1,000 exemption?
That's for the $1,000 exemption. Here, it's just, give me the tax return.
Those people could, could apply for this.
You either have information or not.
Those people could apply for this, and that information the assessors already have because if they qualified for the other one, they could qualify for this. Okay, if, what I'm asking you to get us this information, maybe do a bullet form and hand it out to us and vote on this at the next meeting.
If you could just email me or text me Stuart's number, I don't, I don't know the person, so...
Can you email JP Stuart? Have his name. He's very responsive, almost answers immediately.
Wow, that's great.
Well, he's great. He's been very helpful to us.
I would love, I know you mentioned, just one other thing, in terms of August meeting being the time when we will approve it and then make sure that it will be eligible to be copied and produced and mailed to...
I don't see why this can't be approved soon.
I would like to see it sooner. If for some reason it weren't to pass, I would think that the public would want to have the option to petition through to get it on the ballot.
Oh, we should definitely...
And I think we should make every effort.
I don't see why this can't pass in April.
Or to leave that option available to the public.
If you have the information next meeting and it's sufficient to the committee to give to the council, I don't see why the committee can't recommend this. CPA's already recommended it, committee. And we could probably try and do this in April, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, predicated on the impact, I would like, because the money comes out of your pocket, right?
Yeah, we know. And that's what they know.
I mean, it's not a city abatement, if you will, it's, the money would come from the CPA.
It would...
Or not...
Hit the income, but we didn't feel it would be that big of an income.
You would imagine...
Not considering the seniors need it. I mean, the balance need it.
Yep.
Did you want to say something, by the way? Because this is where we're talking.
Well, how much do they bring in in CPA taxes? 600,000 or 400,000?
It's like 400 and...
So, you're looking at maybe 1%?
It's less than that. It's not gonna hurt.
Why don't you just do a plan 70 years old?
You can't.
That's not how the law works.
Unfortunately, the law is very specific and you can't cut and paste it. You have to do exactly what it says. They didn't want it to be messed with by all the communities, I guess, so...
But the state's only giving 11, oh, 57% now, they're not matching 100 anymore.
It's 30% now, thank God. They just passed, they passed the bill finally this year.
This year?
We got a 30% match. But it was 100 when we started.
Yeah. I thought it was down to 100.
Oh, yeah. I think it was, right, Jamie? Now, 11%.
Maybe they can cut back to whatever they match dollar for dollar. So, if they're matching 30%, it's like $400,000, like 30% of $400,000.
Well, they'll only match 30% of that amount, you know, that's their problem, they'll...
It just doesn't seem like there's any cuts ever coming, you know? I mean, $4,000, $6,000 cut for the entire city. CPA is like, point bottom.
It would be more, it would actually be more than...
60 people, they could stand on the corner and get 400,000.
Well, we do give a fairly large $100,000 exemption right now. That was started from day one. So, if your house is worth $239, it's only taxed $139. That's not...
Before the calculation and surcharge.
Before the surcharge is calculated.
There's four exemptions that are possible. We went in 20 years ago, 13 years ago, with the $100,000 exemption. There's one for, I think, businesses, which doesn't seem like a good idea. And then there's one for, as JP was mentioning, number one, which is for the seniors and low-income folks. But that's it. That's the only ones we can actually...
Senior, single, right?
Single.
For one, one senior, huh?
It's based on your, your assessment of your house.
No, but I mean, how much is the income?
The income count.
Oh, I see.
I can look to what it is currently and I'll get you that.
Okay. We've passed, so, you have your homework, JP. Do you think you can get it to us next Finance meeting?
It'll work out.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, now, we're off. I'm very disappointed that Michael isn't here, but John, who is Chair of the CPA Committee...
Professor Seaman, he's, he just started his meeting now.
Where is his meeting?
Okay.
We'll talk slowly. Did we have anything else on our plate? I'm trying to remember. Oh, let me just tell you, Peg and, uh...
Oh, seriously?
I've asked for some information from Barbara regarding stipends and fees and everything, and we will get that all to you next meeting, and then we'll start debating it.
Okay.
The last time we raised anything was 2016.
Yes.
So, just as an example, and the board...
For the 2018 term.
Right. And then if we were to do it now, it wouldn't impact until 2022. And BPW did not get a raise since 1997. That's one that I'm... But just, that's just for information. I'll get you all that information at the next meeting.
Okay.
I have, I mean, need your help. Barb said the MMA may have, trying to get an idea of what we pay mayors all the way to state say. And if you have MMA content, that would be great to get through. Anyway, what we have before us is $25,000 from CPA, reserved for historic. The actual appropriation will be $12,500. Jamie, you correct me if I'm wrong here, but the only way we get the federal grant is if we actually put forward the $25,000, then he gets the grant and gives it back to us.
Yes, so, if we are awarded to the grant, it's an reimbursement grant, where we have to do the full, spend the full amount, get a different project, submit our final report to the state, at which point then we reimburse the $12,500.
And he was pretty confident that he would get this way. In fact, that was...
Well, so, so, we applied, it was a two-part application. The first part was applied for in November's preliminary application. We received the notice from the preliminary application that we could then apply for the actual grant, which was due February 10th. They had just been the notice that we received that we could apply around mid-December. So, it was a very short, from when they let us know that we could apply for the full grant to now, to when the grant application was due. And it was a very short period of time, and we had to have that funding in place for that application.
Well, we were able to give them a letter indicating to CPA Committee.
We, correct. And the application stated that this would be coming to City Council, but due to the city's operation process, it's going to be another one.
Okay. That's right. This inventory is valuable to the Historic Commission. I'm hoping that Michael gets here and trying to make sure you have questions as to how that's valued, how it's important. But it's a detail of the condition of historic resources in the city. It's professionally done. The amounts are gonna be taken out strictly from historic preservation in that budget. So, there's plenty of funding in the historic, in that account to pay for it. Again, the actual amount we will be reimbursed from, that's all I have right now. I wish he was here to give us some information. Maybe I could, or Jamie, I could get your question.
I can, I can, I mean, if there's just questions or, or just, or, general, us...
So, so, so this is specifically the, essentially, is this a specific, just, so, just around Main Street, the historic inventory, the inventory of historic buildings on Main Street only, or...
He called it the extension in downtown area. Oh, you've got them on, thank you.
I have a map that I can pass around. And you can see it's the lower map of the area, under the black.
Oh.
And so, yeah, so, so it goes, currently, we have the Main Street National Historic District, and we have the, the Mill, National Mill Historic District. And what this inventory project is looking to do is to inventory the historic structures in the neighborhood from here going up to Park Street, through, kind of up to the Liston, through the Main Street Cemetery, and then connecting to along Main Street. And looking at the historic resources in that area, including the Liston campus and the, the Main Street Cemetery. So, there'll be some, look at the gravestones, those, or those areas in there. The idea being that we will hopefully, we're selecting 100 resources within that area that are going to be given, full inventory, and so...
Like the cemetery?
Yeah, so the cemetery is gonna, I think the cemetery counts as like two or three resources, but typically, one building will be one resource. And what that does for the community is we will then have a list of 100 of the most significant resources in that area, which will then be protected, it will be, if someone wants to knock down a building for reconstruction or for some sort of project damage, that inventory will at least give the Historic Commission the ability to say, well, this building was significant to the community because...
It was built in 1805.
1805, and so-and-so lived here, was important.
So, does it protect the buildings from, here?
It does not, it does not protect the buildings, but it does allow the Historic Commission to go through the demolition delay process.
Because of that, does it make...
Because it's been inventoried, but doesn't actually stop someone who wants to demolish...
Take a petition and get it...
Just makes it feel bad.
It makes us know what we're losing.
I love you, Patty.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But it's not something that actually takes away property owners' rights to do what they want.
JP? Quick question. In terms of the previous historic register, that historic recordation of buildings in the community, their files downstairs, right, unbelievable amounts of information, how will what you're proposing do different from what's already done?
There'll be new research, there'll be 100 new resources added to that.
And just as an aside, Barbara La Bombard is actually applying to get all that data by a company to find out what we have for documentation, historic documentation, birth certificates going way back, and that historic inventory, if it should be in one of those rooms where we're, we're going to inventory, that will help put it all together. And we're trying to get it into a digital database.
Currently, all of these inventory properties are available online through the MACRIS database. It stands for Mass Cultural Resources and Information System. It's hosted by the Mass Historic Commission, but we have the original inventories on file downstairs, but the digital copies are posted at the state level. And again, these are just an inventory form, it doesn't actually list them on... And again, these are just an inventory form. It doesn't actually list them on the state register or the national register. If through this process, there were items, structures in there that were of particular significance, that would make them eligible for listing on the state or national register, this would be something, a future project for the Historic Commission and that property owner to get that listing.
It helps the committee too. Future committee can just get the inventory. They won't have to research the building. It's already in the inventory.
Right, and if it's a city-owned building that's inventoried, then that process will make it eligible for future CPA funds under Historic Preservation.
Phil, you got a question?
I just, I'm not seeing, I don't feel, I don't understand, you know, what it does for the city and as a whole. What I'm understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is just putting a list together of historic buildings with the information on it so that if somebody decides, if Williston decides to knock one of their buildings down to build a new gymnasium or something in its place, we can say that it's a historic building, but it really doesn't give us anything, doesn't give us teeth, it doesn't give us the bite to do anything. What's the purpose? I don't see it. I apologize.
To, more than that, in that this will, again, if there's enough, if the structures, if the neighborhood is intact enough, this study shows that the neighborhood is intact enough, the neighborhood itself might be eligible for a national register listing, similar to Main Street. Main Street's a national register district.
Does that protect the structure?
No, it doesn't. We really tend to have a local historic district designation in order to, kind of, sort of historic district that would have teeth, like we see in...
And this is solving up on an inventory we've already done, the other areas, so.
Correct.
Mayor got a question? Come on.
I would say in the converse, while it may identify or build up the case for a historical district, it also conversely allows the city to move more expediently when a developer or collateral project comes in. You know what is not historical, and in Ferry Street, we had a couple of places where we didn't have quite enough to say if this is historical or not, and it held up the project. Surveying historical documents and buildings in the city seems, on the face of it, very goofy, but it allows...
I want to look that one up.
Pretty super swell. But if we're going forward with a housing production plan and needs and knowing where there is a historical district that we can build on a grant for housing, we know, we need to know what we have by federal and state guidelines to go forward with what people want to see. And we don't have a handle on that at all.
I think the CPA...
Especially in that area.
Was designed for this very purpose. Historic preservation is one of the benchmark areas of the CPA, and all of these things are so important to the city. I don't know if that helps you, Bill, but they are when it comes to, especially when it comes to development.
And I would also say the CPA is in buckets, right? You have prisons, and so, you know, if not this, what?
When we renovate Old Town Hall or any other building, we use this, but on the other hand, finding a city, another city building, like, the library isn't, but I told them to look at it, and if we have a city building that is historically registered after this inventory, and that city building needs some maintenance, not maintenance, can't use that word, sorry, some renovation, we can apply for historic grants and CPA funding to do so, but we have to have documentation to put it on. So I see a lot of value to this.
I think it is present. It gets us closer to shovel-raining projects in an area where there's a lot of interest, and it'd be very interesting to see what happens to Bank of America, and who, I don't even know who got the RFP, you know, closed February 7, but that's retail and who it brings, and what we can or can't do in that area, and be able to speak to that, to developers and other service agencies or whoever's looking, with some surety that say, yes, there's a zoning issue with this, but we know that if you're going to do something here, it's got historical significance, so put that into your pro forma. Or we know that that is historical and this isn't, and that happens all the time. I mean, people come in all the time and they ask wetlands, historical, you know, they want to know what the property's like, and it's, we don't have an economic development department or director, and we won't for a very long time. We just aren't big enough to merit that. Things like this, these utility study things are really important.
Just to go back to One Ferry Street as an example. If we had this inventory done, that, what did that take, a few months to research the historical aspects that they were worried about? If we had the inventory done, that's done. They look it up and say, okay, we're good. Historic people would say either, yes, this is a, or whatever. I mean, it does give you data that you'd have to research otherwise.
So I would also say, it's, this survey done, and if it were to go, if you're really a keen developer, you are searching and finding out what has been determined is historical or not. So say you were doing a bigger project, and you were looking for historical tax credits, which are very difficult to get.
Oh, there you go.
You would also know what would be applicable and not. And One Ferry Street, they actually went back and forth. If it's so historical, can this be a part of our financial package? At the end of it, we all talked over and over and said, you know what, historical tax credits aren't, it's not going to be a strong application, and they went the way of abandoning building tax credits. And those, I mean, it just sounds like minutia, because it is, but it's building out the budget for business owners and also the community of what's doable. And again, it just puts some sunlight on a very obscure part of East Hampton, and now we know what it is. You know, we got to know who we are to get done what we want to do.
Thank you. That's a lot of great information, especially how it's being used already, some of our projects. Any other questions, Bill, or...
Yeah, what's the sense of urgency? I'm just curious. Why are we going to delay it?
I'm just asking a question. So, it's a one-year grant, so once we get the funding from the state, we have to spend it by June, or we have to seek our reimbursement from them by June 30th to 21st. This grant that we apply for is, only every other year are municipalities allowed to apply, unless they're certified government, which East Hampton is not certified government in regards to historic, so it would be at least another two years before we could reapply the grant. And the funding does have to be, our funding has to be placed before they make their grant announcements. So we have to, once the City Council, and it goes through the preparation process, I will send them an update saying, oh, by the way, the funding's placed, but if they don't get that, they're not going to perform.
Just to start, I've been on the committee, the CPA committee for, I think, four years now. Historic projects like this are always unanimously approved. It's something that they feel very, feel really helpful to impact the community, the cities. Historic preservation projects are important to the CPA committee, which is why they did the unanimous approval.
I understand, and part of the challenge, and the only thing I'm looking at is you look at what we're going to be asking the historic part of CPA funds, you know, when Old Town Hall comes, is going to be in the $9,000 range. You know, we got to, we can't take it from other buckets within the CPA designations, right?
Yes, you can.
You can? You can take it from recreation, put it for...
No, you have to use it. You can use it, the undesignated fund as well.
Undesignated, yeah, but the other buckets that are in there, we can't use towards that, so we're limited to whatever the balance is in historic preservation, we need the funds and everything else, so this is coming out of that bucket that we would use to do that.
I think you're misunderstanding. The historic preservation funding can only be used for historic preservation.
Correct, which would be to Old Town Hall.
One part of it, but the rest of Old Town Hall can be funded. Any CPA funds can be funded from either one of the three tenants, one of those tenants being historic preservation. The undesignated funds, of those funds beyond what we are required by law to put into those three places, so we can use general, what I call general funds, undesignated funds, to fund any project. For instance, if we had a portable housing project and we needed more funding, and we've done this, you can take it out of undesignated. You would, Jamie always starts with the account that funds that when she gives us the budget, which is why this is all coming from. So, in other words, if I understood you correctly, this doesn't hurt that, doesn't hurt any of the other future projects in the historic, Old Town Hall or anything, because there's plenty of money other than in the historic preservation bucket that can be used, as long as it's used legally for that project.
I'll also say, just to, again, to speak to the need for this, the last time this Historic Commission did any historic inventory was 1990. Since I've been here. And so, in 1990, they did a huge number. They had grad student intern, I don't know if this is essentially how it was permitted, but it's, they did it, she did a remarkable job and did a large budget inventory. Prior to that was like the early 1980s, so it's really been a long time. Under the CPA, any structure that's older than 15 years is considered historic. So, you know, we're looking at, the last time that, yeah, so 1970 is when, you know, we have entire sections of the city that were, that were built in the 60s and 70s. We're not looking at those sections as part of this. We're looking at structures that are dating from the turn section.
I also, just kind of go back to what you were saying. I get a little nervous when we make the assumption that all money for historic preservation just de facto is going to the Old Town Hall.
We didn't say that.
I think that's what Phil was saying, if we take it out of here, we can't spend it there. I'm speaking to Bill, I'm not speaking to you. Although, you know, I agree. And so, I get, if that's what you are saying, that $25,000 would not be available then to go to Town Hall, I think we, I don't think it needs to be an or. I think it can be an and. I think we can do both.
What's, do you know what the balance is in that bucket by chance?
$390,000.
So $390,000, so I mean, we wouldn't even have enough to do the whole project anyways.
No.
I understand. I'm just saying, I'm just looking at it as the big picture, what we know we're planning on doing.
I think we need to have an and. I don't, I don't like the concept of, because it's in that line item, it's already spoken.
I didn't say that it was. It's not what I'm saying either. I'm just saying we got to be cognizant of how much money and what we have and where it's going. You know, and we already know that we're looking to spend money in the future out of this bucket, right? And we need to be cognizant of that so that when the time comes where we need the money, are we spending it on a survey that really has no bite, that doesn't do anything for us other than designate?
You're...
I might be blowing it out of proportion, I get it.
No, 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 but you're misunderstanding what the funding is allowed to be done. We could spend only $50,000 out of Historic Preservation Account for Old Town Hall. There's one, there's, in the undesignated fund, there's $930,000, if you look at this budget here. We could spend a lot of money out of that, too. It all can go to any project under Historic Preservation, as long as that project qualifies. So, in other words, we're not damaging Historic Preservation's account at all.
No, I get you, I get you. And I guess what I'm trying to say is I disagree that this doesn't have any value or teeth. I don't think everything has to be shiny and bright and, you know, whatever. I think this is necessary for all the reasons the mayor was speaking about in terms of development and known entities and shovels in the ground and being able to move projects without delay. It's information and information to need, always has to be.
Mike Olson, this is Mike. He's the Chairman of the Historic Preservation Committee?
Historical.
Historical, I forget what they call it. Anyway, Jamie and the mayor were very eloquent in defending this project in the sense that this inventory will go on top of the other inventory and helps with development, helps with the future committee's needs to find out if a certain building, for instance, they want to demolish it, wait a minute, we want to see what it is. I don't know what you want to add. They were very good, but since you're here.
Well, since I don't know what they say.
They said good things. Well, let's do this. Bill is a little concerned. He wants to know what kind of bite it would have, and we all feel, Peg and I feel as members of the council and members of CPA, that it does have a lot of significance. Maybe you can speak to what it can do for us.
What's the benefit of the city, you know, in regards to, if we do this and we have it, you know, it doesn't have the, if somebody wants to knock down a building, and it's Williston, for example, that's the one that was on the table earlier. They can do what they want with their building, you know, if it's not nationally registered or whatever, so. Even then, they can still do whatever they want. So what benefit does this give us as a city? What does it do for us?
Delay in demolition, I think.
Well, there's delay in demolition, but in the end, I guess, I'm just trying to find out, you know, we're spending $12,000, and it's a lot of money, but I just want to make sure I know what it's going for. Peg gave us a great example. I'm not saying that we didn't.
I think just knowing exactly what we have out there for resources would give us, you know, protecting it, keeping a character to downtown areas, but, I mean, it really hasn't been much done in the last...
1990s or so.
Yeah, and this would give us kind of a good start on that, too, looking at, like I said, looking at the resources that we do have out there. You know, I mean, with One High Street getting on the national register, that obviously brought in a lot of apartment buildings. It's a nice project. It's good, doesn't really take away from the character of the town. So I think a lot of those lines also, what do we need to preserve, what do we need to focus on? Probably not so much as something right away, but something certainly down the road would give us more.
Certainly helps the planning department.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, and if there is a building that we really want to protect, this helps us defend it in court or something, if we have to protect a building from demolition. Let's say somebody wanted to tear down Memorial Hall, and we didn't let that happen. I don't know if the RFP allows that. But let's just say, that's an example of a building that we want to preserve, but because it's sold to a developer, they want to tear it down, put up a Walmart. Nothing against Walmart.
You know, being private property is always hard. It's not a guarantee to win, but at least you have some backup. What was the building used for before? What was the whole chain of, you know, the owners?
Best trade.
And, you know, I mean, it gives you certainly more of a leg to stand on if you walk in and say, oh, we don't like to, you know, now we do. We have history, we have a whole narrative. It's what's going on. If anybody, or you go up to school, they're probably buying that up, you know.
All right. None of this information exists anywhere already?
Sure that, you know, it's all over the place.
We just put it together and update it.
We're hiring a professional to research it all, correct?
Yeah, and I think we're trying to get a little bit into the cemetery or something.
Yeah, Jamie mentioned it, and I thought that was excellent, because there might be some tombstones back from the Civil War.
Although there's, I think, a couple of revolutionary soldiers there that have tombstones.
Nice to know where they are. JP, did you want to say something?
Jamie, in terms of the files that are downstairs from the 1990s study, I know there's at least two full draws. There may be four or five full file draws of...
I'm alert to.
Two, okay. I knew there was at least two. This will not, you said that will not duplication of that effort. Is that information on...
All that information is on my...
It is on my, what is the website?
That's been digitized.
Right, so if you go, that's the MACRS database, or is that a... M A C R I S.
M A C R I S, okay. So the public, and the council, go look and see what we have already. So the public, and any councilor, go look and see what we have already on file.
Exactly.
And then say, okay, now how are we going to add to that?
Yeah, so I would actually encourage you to take a look at that database, because when you look at any particular inventory, you'll see the ones that were done in the 70s are typically about two pages, the ones that were done in the 90s are like four to six pages. These ones will be a little bit longer, not that longer is necessarily better, but there's just more information on each resource. That's why in the 70s and 90s, we were able to get, we were able to document more resources. But you can see what sort of information's collected, there's a photo of the structure, if the architect was known, if it was, if it's historically significant because of who lived there, as opposed to the style or structure of that building. And then there's a narrative statement that goes along with that. In some cases, the structures are particularly important, and there'll be a note as to whether or not this would meet the standards for a national register nomination.
So what she's referring to might as well, we're going to get, we're going to read that. Any other questions?
Yes, for me, it would be helpful to know, dial line that have a memo page that says, in addition to this information, the MACRS information that we already have, we're going to do X, Y, and Z, and then it would help us make that determination.
We're going to be doing 100 new resources, so 100 new structures.
100 new structures.
Of which...
That we currently don't have.
Correct. Of which the cemetery accounts for between two to four structures. And that list hasn't been fully developed yet because it will strain some time and money to develop that initial list.
So 100 new structures, it's a 100 new ones.
Yeah, so we will work with KPC.
She did mention that earlier, but I'm sorry.
All right, that's fine, we didn't register.
We would have registered, I thought you just said 100 total, but it's 100 new structures. So it's not redundant?
Well, I mean, in some cases, like, if there's a particular structure that we go back and look and see that, well, this one was, like, let's say, Center School was done in the 70s, and the information in there is just like, you know, but we might decide to redo that one because it's an important property and it's important to document that.
Is there data now, to that, is there data out in the world that's just easier to get at now than obviously, than it was in the 70s? So it's not, so my assumption would be that it would be somewhat easier than in the 70s to find some of this information, digitally, in these places, or is it equally as difficult as it was one year ago?
I would say...
It's easier, I'll speak to that just briefly, and I have to, my daughter Megan does this as part of her environmental science work, uses fire insurance mats that are digitized and available for every community, every place. Back in the 1800s, when they evaluated buildings, they went through how close a fire item, how many feet of do you have in the building, what types, what are you doing in the building? So that kind of information is available.
Yeah, but the historic, the historic use of the building is history and how...
Oh, it says, what, all of that information?
A lot of that comes from the Registry of Deeds. So back in the 70s, people were going to the Registry of Deeds and physically pulling the plan books or the lead dogs and, you know, sitting there and thinking about...
They may still have to do that, right?
And now, well, now you can go online to the Registry of Deeds and, as you can say, your computer at home and get that information.
A lot more resources. It does, it still takes someone to sit at the computer.
Ancestry.com for just...
Still have to go and get it.
Yeah, I mean, and then I think also, you know, there's just more information, so I have to comb through more, more red herrings before I can actually find the thing I don't want.
Any further discussion on this topic? So I would like to have a motion to prove.
Motion to prove...
Twenty-five thousand.
$25,000 from the CPA reserve for historic preservation or inventory of historic structures on Main Street, section into the downtown area.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mike, next Wednesday, I set this for public hearing, I'm pretty sure I did. Upstairs, City Full Council, it'd be great if you were there.
Sure.
You mean that guy John, if you want to stick on, he's a CPA member, don't get offended. But that would be good in case people have questions, although, the mayor was eloquent, I might ask her to speak again. Jamie, I don't know if you want to come, but if Mike's there, he can answer the same questions, you were great too, so, 6:15 next Wednesday. So we talked about everything else, I don't have anything else.
What time on March 25th do you need next week?
I will keep it at 5:30 unless we change, I like to keep it consistent. Is that, that's working for you, right?
The 5:30?
Yeah. That way, we're all here at the same time. We were 5:00 for a while, but this way, we're all here.
Yeah, I think that's good.
So it's the 25th, 5:30?
3:25, 5:30, you know, for a month.
Okay? Motion to... All in favor?
Aye.
I'm turning off the video. Thank you all.